Morning. Again, good morning. I'd like to call to order the Emergency Serv- Community and Emergency Services Committee, sorry, didn't mean to slight you there, John. For Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, 8:30 in the morning. You would please bow your heads briefly for a quick invocation. Your heavenly Father, we come before you this morning to do the business of the people of Columbia County. We thank you for the many blessings you've graced us with in this community, living in this great state and nation. Please watch over those that protect us, that do our service, and look after the people of Columbia County, whether they are the first responders or the clerk in the office. Everyone in our government is working hard to take care of the citizens of this great county. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Fatherhood, religion, one nation, God, visible.
Good morning. Let the show that we are short one member of the committee this morning, which had some personal business that could not be rescheduled. But we do have a quorum with Doug Duncan and myself here. So we'll move into the approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
Moved to accept.
So moved. And approval of the agenda, any adjustments?
I believe we're good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. There are no presentations that I see. I think we have some reports later, but. And nothing on consent, so we'll move straight into debate, and that would be Mr. Luton.
Thank you. First item, we have some donations for animal services. Kathy Anderson, $2,000. Joyce Daly, $100. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
So moved. Next.
This is for purchase of capital items for the Parks and Recreation Department, Park Maintenance area. We received quotes for these items. Two Toro Zero Turn 60-inch mowers, two direct collect Toro mowers, John Deere bunker and field rake, which is field drag, field groomer, and John Deere Pro Gator cart. Staff recommends approval of purchase of these items.
Tell me about this $32,000 gator.
I'd love to.
Cool, and it's.
It's a full utility cart. It can basically do anything a regular-sized truck can do, but gets us into smaller spaces. It's got a dump bed, it can tow anything. We have a Toro version of it. We use it at Patriots. I think this one we'll need for the new parks that we just opened.
Are these replacements or new? Or adding to?
This is a, the only replacement is.
Right, everything else is replaced.
Everything else is a replacement.
So how long we had the ones we're using?
We've had those 60-inch zero turns for seven, six, seven years. We run them pretty, pretty hard.
In our recent, last two or three years when we adjusted the landscape contracts, are we, I understand that there's a difference on maintenance versus landscape. Are we using these more in the same capacity now than we did a few years ago, or, I'm just asking?
I would think we are using them more because we took away part of the landscaping contract and turned everything over to Parks and Recreation to be able to cut inside and outside their gate. So they're cutting a lot more grass. So we did move that money around and saw the realized savings of not paying the contract to pay our folks to be able to do that. And I must say, they're doing a much better job. If you go to any of our parks, I know you all have, you'll be very impressed with the grounds. It's a result of them taking care of them, taking pride in what they're doing.
And we've added parks since then.
Correct, we added parks as well. We have more parks.
They have tens of thousands of dollars shifting that over, and it looks better.
Moved to consent.
Second, I will brief comment. You guys are doing a fantastic job. But I think I need a new pair of shoes. Are we, is there anything we can do about? I know the incredible rain we've had, but I know there's some spots over there.
Spot out there, yeah.
Yeah.
Talking about that yesterday.
Before I even realized it, it was like I was in quicksand up to my ankles the other day.
Been talking with roads and bridges to get out there and help us look at some of those spots.
Throw some sand down or something?
Yeah, maybe some drains. Yeah.
All right. So that has moved on to consent. Next, sir.
This is an amendment to the CBB's contract to add language for their taking over the oversight and supervision of the visitor's center. The visitor's center previously was under the Rental Venues Department, which wasn't much of a fit, really was just sort of location-based, you could say. So we've gotten with the CBB, and we think that's a much better fit, of course, and they are actually going to move their offices out into the lock keeper's house. So it really, it's a win-win, we feel, and I think the CBB's on board. Shelley's here, if you have any questions for her, and they're planning on moving in, I believe soon. They've already moved in.
Yeah, that's a little presumptuous.
Yeah, I'm telling you what, before we vote.
Actually, I was going to ask about this beforehand. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but is this something that normally needs to come before us because it's an exchange of facilities? Or, I mean, this was something that would.
It's not really the change.
Glad it did, thank you for bringing it to our attention, but.
It's an amendment to their contract, adding these additional duties, so that's the reason we're bringing it to you. As far as just moving them, we could have just moved them around without having to do that, but because we're amending the actual contract with them and giving them operation and oversight of that particular facility, we would need you to amend the contract.
Okay.
Moved to consent.
Second. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you. This item is the annual update for our MOU with the Board of Education on the Clemmie County Watch Program. It started last year, and it's one where when we see that school-aged children have witnessed some sort of severe trauma that may affect them, we simply submit the name and the school to the Board of Education, and they'll monitor that child's performance. In the past, they can witness trauma, and it can affect their grades, and they don't know, so they treat it with discipline. This allows them to initiate a counseling process instead of discipline should the behavior change. If no behavior changes, then no one knows. We used it maybe twice last year, but we'd recommend.
Doesn't require any kind of legal, I mean, other than MOU, any kind of, I think HIPAA, I think all these other crazy laws.
They have no idea what the trauma was or anything, simply puts the.
It's okay for us to.
Correct.
Great, moved to consent.
And second, and I'll just say, chief, we talked about this several months back when I was asking my capacity in the State Board of Education about what we were doing, and you guys have a fantastic program, I think. I'm glad, and y'all for working with the Department of Education, very needed and maybe not, maybe slightly unsung program. So thank you. All right. Who handles this one?
I'm going to handle this.
Yes, sir.
Next item we have for you is the hiring of an attorney for conflict counsel for 2020 tax appeals. As you know, Hall Barrett handles all of our tax appeals and handles all the county legal work. There are times when we have conflict. This is not like the conflict counsel that we have in Savannah. This is more specific to just these certain tax appeals, and really, in this case, it really boils down to almost one company. Hall Story Appeals several times a year, and Hall Barrett has a conflict with Hall Story, so we have to hire a conflict counsel for that. We've had a conflict counsel attorney on board for a while. He's decided he didn't want to do that anymore. The county attorney then reached out on behalf of the Board of Assessors to multiple attorneys in the area, no less than 10, I believe, we discussed, and we had several that didn't even want the work, that didn't want to do it. And then we got quotes, and they were in the 300 to 350-an-hour range. As you know, we pay our county attorney $190 an hour, which is one of the lowest in the area. But based on a little bit of conversation, the county attorney reached out to Barry Fleming and talked to him about that, and Barry Fleming agreed to not only take on the work, but to take on the work at the negotiated rate that we have with the county attorney's office, which is the $190 an hour. This is specifically for the tax appeals. It's not any other conflict work. The tax assessor will assign this work as we go forward, and as you know, Barry Fleming is a county attorney and a city attorney for several other counties and municipalities, and he understands this process, and we feel like we've got a pretty good deal going forward with this, especially since the person that we were paying, we were paying more than this to do the work that no longer wants to do it. So with that, staff recommends entering to an agreement with Barry Fleming to handle the conflict appeals for 2020 for the tax assessor's office.
So the point is that our county attorney chooses to do business with somebody that, other than us?
With, with all consideration that they do share a name.
Right. Hall Story, Hall Barrett.
I'm just calling you out here.
Pointing that out there.
Moved to consent.
Second. Thank you. I don't see any other business for the committee. We'll move straight down into staff reports. Mr. Wallen, it is the Fireship Department show.
I have our annual running summary, monthly run summary, and our year-to-date budget report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about those.
No questions.
How many cats in a tree?
Superior request, our staff has put together our organizational management plan from the beginning of Phase One to well out into the future, and I will be very brief. Phase One through Three were initially approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2016. Supposed to be about a five-to-six-year plan, purpose being to reorganize in something that made the most sense here versus tradition. It added, over the course of three years, 27 firefighters, which was our weakest area identified by our ISO report, which I know you've seen. We also developed a career path, equalized our rank structure. We went a little non-traditional, but it made sense, and it provided funding opportunity to hire additional firefighters. We also took on the dive rescue team from EMA. It was an all-volunteer team. We've moved that to at least half-professional now, and we've also moved from basic open-water certification to having a public safety diver program in place that we're training those professional and remaining volunteers to. That eliminates a lot of liability that exists just operating at the open-water level. All of the support from the commission and management, we've replaced boats, we initiated a apparatus replacement program, which is where we've picked up state-of-the-art fire engines, the GeoBond, and purchased a 100-foot aerial platform. It was a replacement which gave us a spare we didn't have in the past, in the past when one was broken out. Phase Four, well, those were completed in three years versus the five-to-six range, so that was, that was amazing. Phase Four, the personnel side was approved in this fiscal budget. That was our four training officers, as well as their related equipment, which I'll be coming along throughout the year with the vehicles and equipment to committee. The second half of the training phase Four is facilities, and those are all in the package, and I know that it, that it's big, but that would meet our likely, not considering replacement cycles, that would, that would be our. There, we would have the state-of-the-art regional training opportunity. Phase Five is two new fire stations, and those locations are included in the report as well. Not included, but we keep it in our back pocket. There's always a question about our Furious Ferry Station, it's something that has to happen there. So we're trying to have multiple options in the background that exist, that as well, if that ever becomes an issue. Phase Six, there are four fire stations that still have two firefighters assigned. In the original phases, it was prudent, but there are still those stations that don't. So Phase Six would include putting the third firefighter at those stations. And then the final Phase Seven is we have a rescue companies. There are three stations that have an engine and a rescue truck. They serve drastically different purposes. There are two firefighters on the engine and two on the rescue truck. We made that decision, instead of three on the engine and one on the rescue, to split them two and two, because it puts more firefighters on the scene, and that was really the goal that we were looking for when we originally started. So Phase Seven would put three back on the fire engine and the two on the rescue truck. While they're labeled linearly, that's not a requirement. It's not, it isn't a priority order, but one is not dependent upon the other, so it is not necessarily a linear plan. And then included in it, in the end, is our future of fire safety. We are approaching a three-year program, and we're almost at the end of Year One in seeking accreditation for fire service, as well as we have a pretty strong cancer risk reduction initiative that we're constantly working on, and we do believe that an additional, not a replacement, but a new aerial apparatus on the west end of the county would be very prudent, considering not just the expanding residential development, but the industrial development. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I do appreciate the update.
Chief, can you tell me a little bit about your plans for building B and all that? I mean.
Building B?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the classroom space and training?
Oh, sure. So the classroom space is modeled after the sheriff's classroom facility. It's a, it's two classrooms.
When he is building or the existing one that we?
Existing one. Designed to have an EMS lab on one side. Almost 70% of our response now is medical. We were running EMT classes multiple times a year, not to mention, we have to run classes weekly in order to maintain the licenses for, everybody has to be in. So EMS lab on one side, fire training classroom on the other. Right now, we do a lot of training in the basement of the house that we have. There's a Class A burn building, Class A, meaning you're burning. Our burn building that's at the end of Clemmie Road is natural gas. So while it's great for training and development, for certification, it doesn't count after burning. A live fire that has to be controlled. So right now, we do it in storage containers on Gibbs Road, which is next door to daycare and developing neighborhood. So would be very prudent to get out of that and get our burning out to the existing land at Clemmie Road there, at our training facility now. And then we do very technical rescue now, rope, collapse, all of these various disciplines of technical rescue, water as well. And so we've laid out options for how we could have protected, safe area to train and continue to advance our technical rescue. So those are the, the main facilities that we've.
If I could add, just, just so you have an idea about what we're looking at, you see in the phases, we've completed several of those, but there, there are plans about how we're going to start that truck rotation. We're going to try to work those into every splosh, so we know that we, we have those. They're going to have to be at the top of our splosh list, not at the bottom of our splosh list going forward. But we're also looking at additional ways to be able to fund that. What you're looking at to finish out all the phases here, you're looking at a capital investment of somewhere around $15 million, which exceeds their single-year budget, obviously. Well, close. And then you're looking at somewhere around a million to a million and a half of ongoing cost in today's dollars if we were to finish all this out today. So if we just waved a magic wand and we did everything, we'd have a $15 million capital outlay and a million and a half-ish going forward every year to be able to do it. That's why we're doing this in phases. We've been able to fast-forward several of these. The Fire Department's done an outstanding job of laying this out, so as we continue to have funds available, we're going to continue to try to fast-forward these phases. But I wanted you to have an idea, the money's there, but I wanted to kind of give you a roll-up of what we're looking at from the administration level as to how we're going to fund what they need.
And part of our budgetary discussion was using a little bit of any excess funds to over-assist in that effort.
Yes, sir.
Give you guys what we, what we can, when we can, and keep moving along in the, in the best possible.
I think one of the best things that we ever did was to lay out a plan. We have internal long-term plans, but I think the best thing we've ever done is to work with them to smooth it out and then bring it to you so you know what we're doing even years in advance. I just think that, that's great.
And you're thinking of trying to make the apparatus replacement schedule roughly 15-year rotation, kind of?
Their frontline life can be 15 years per NFPA and then five years in served status.
Great. Very informative, thank you, and it's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Glenn, good work, too.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. So we'll take that for information. And, but I think that's it, isn't it? I think that concludes the business of the Community Emergency Services Committee, unless there's anything legal or anyone else? Yes, ma'am. You want to give us a report?
I kind of do, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I got to tour the five.
You were kidnapped, is that correct? Is that what I understand?
I do just wanted to. Worked so hard and they were so great. I got to kind of look at stuff. Ask all the asinine questions that you'd ask as a kid.
Normally, Mr. Miller, we'd ask you to step to the mic.
Well.
You're, you're, you're carrying those, so just keep going.
No, normally, you know, they were so patient and as we, as we slide down. They were so kind and.
You want to ask your question about?
About the truck?
No.
No. Just need to change the class of your driver's license, and you can absolutely drive the truck.
You had a question about the MOU with the school board?
Oh, okay, so.
Does she need to come up?
No.
No, we're not taking liability, we're just offering a service. Anything else from the public or staff or anyone else? All right. If you've got any other questions, you can always bring them up to the next committee. But for right now, we were adjourned, Community Emergency Services, and you guys need a couple minutes?
Just a couple.
Two minutes, it's 8:53, we'll get started at 8:55.
Yeah, I think so.
Order. We'll have order. Always wanted to do that. I only got a few months left, I might as well have fun. All right. So I will call to order the Development and Planning Services Committee for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Having already dispensed the invocation and pledge and discussed the quorum of two out of three, not bad, we will move into the approval of July 28th minutes. So moved. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
I have one staff report at the end, Mr. Chairman, I'll get to that.
That gives it a little bit of meat on the bone. None on consent, then? No presentations? We move straight into debate, new business? Mr. Schlotter?
Thank you, sir. I'll take the first one. This is a change order number five for Patriots Park. Project is complete, and Mr. Mobley is back here in the back. If you have questions for him, his crew's done an amazing job out there. Did bring this project in $17,525.86 under budget, so this is a deductive change order. Staff is recommend approval.
Move to consent quickly. Good work, too.
And you'll sign that one.
I didn't even understand that, it was so fast. Second. Development Services.
All right, we have an alcohol beverage license of El Toro, Grove Town LLC. The applicant has provided all the required information. They were requesting a license to sell beer, wine, and the still spirit for on-premise consumption at 727 Gateway Boulevard. They have, they have provided all the information as posted to the site, and staff recommends approval of the license for the September 15th, 2020 BOC meeting.
All right.
Moved to consent.
Second. That takes care of new business. So we go through legal matters? None? Staff reports? Did we have one?
I'll let Paul give his, and then I'll finish up.
All right, Planning Services, sir.
All right, the first one we have is the July 20, 2019, 2020 Development Services Report, and a copy of that report is attached for your information. No further action is required. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
No questions.
All right, the next one we have is the July 2020 Development Service Financial Report, and a copy of that is attached for your information. No further action is needed on that. I do want to point out that the fund balance numbers are like last year, until we get the entire previous year's budget finalized, those numbers will be somewhat isolated there.
This point of information on the two bar charts, probably wouldn't hurt to say what's actually, what it means.
What's blue?
July, yeah, I mean, it's kind of the rezoning, I guess, but.
Sorry?
RC, Vare, total, I'm just looking at the bar charts.
Rezoning, variances?
Yeah, and then that's by, you're in the planning, so Paul's in the Development Services, the one you're looking at is planning. So those are, those are comparisons of years, so it gives you a five-year snapshot of how we are on rezonings, variances, and combined action.
Just in the total volume?
Correct, so you have, you have the top one is for the month of July.
I got that.
Basically compared five years of rezonings. Lower chart is year-to-date, January through July, five years of comparison, so it gives you a good running history of what we're doing compared to previous years.
There any, is that a breakdown of commercial, residential, just total rezonings?
This is, this is total rezonings, we can break that down, though.
No, 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 no need, I was just asking. I was just curious, because the number is so much higher. Surprising that we're going through that much, but I guess if it includes residential and commercial.
Right, the month of July, we did go through. Right, the month of July, we did go through blaze during March, April, May, so July, I think, was pretty hard and heavy. You look at the year-to-date, we're actually behind two years ago. We're ahead of last year, but we're behind where we were two years ago. So, the numbers actually balance out once you bring in the year-to-date.
Is this square knowledge? I know we're a fast-growing county, but is this trend consistent with other areas where they're, during this quarantine and, and the dumpster fire that is 2020, that they're seeing? I know construction's continuing.
We're an anomaly. There, there, a lot of, very few communities are seeing this. As a matter of fact, I was having a conversation with, well, I was having a conversation with one of the high-ups in Maybomb this past weekend. And he was talking about, he was on a regional conference call, talking about the amount of building that was going on here in our area. And they were looking at places like Houston, Texas, all the way, you know, through Louisiana, all the way back up into the Carolinas. Everybody had a negative report except for this market. Everybody that was on the call had a negative report except for this market. And they were stunned that we were operating the way we did. With that being said, our MLS inventory is half of what it was this time last year. So, we're selling, it's absolutely a seller's market. Houses are being sold within the hours of being put on the market from all price points, the lowest price point to the highest price points. I had the same conversation, somebody sold a $700,000-plus house without even putting a sign in the yard because somebody was already ready to buy that, that home. So, we're struggling to keep up with the inventory, but to, to your point, it's an absolute anomaly.
Yeah, I did, maybe it was in the Wall Street Journal, I read an article within the last week that talked about June housing sales across the country were up like 25%.
Read the same, read, read the same article. Yes, sir.
That, well, fantastic. Imagine how well we'd be doing if we're so hard to do business.
Just wanted to think, just if I could add, there was a lot of question, we were, we were talking about this. What's driving people, what's, what's bringing people to the community? Is it Army Cyber? Is it this, is it that? And, and I think that has a lot to do with it. But, but I think what we're seeing a lot more of now, what the real estate agents are reporting, are people are just wanting to move to this area. They have family members that are here, they have people that have moved here for jobs and other reasons. And they're joining them here because they like the quality of life here. So, we have people that are not actually moving for a job, they're moving for the quality of life and then looking for a job once they get here.
I, I have seen that firsthand. I'm very aware of, of a few people that have, like you said, moved here because they either had family or they stayed here previously, they were stationed here. For whatever reason, they have chosen to leave wherever they were for various reasons. And we were their first choice of new residents. All right, so that's reports. I apologize, Mr. Scarborough, we cut you off, did you finish?
Yes, sir, just had the last one, which was all July and August Temporary Alcohol Permits Report, which is, I believe that's there for your review, no actions needed.
Two pages, that's a lot of alcohol issues. Like everybody at home during the quarantine. Thank you, sir, any questions?
Yes, sir. One other item, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I apologize, we have a new item.
No, that's okay, just, I know there was some discussion and everybody's familiar with the tragic events in Richmond County with the code enforcement officer there that, that was actually murdered doing his job. Some question about our code enforcement, how we operate in Columbia County. I immediately reached out to our code enforcement manager after that happened and, and started a review of our processes to make sure that we have what we needed in place. Also, to make sure that we have the necessary equipment in place that we needed. The job that, that we do is not exactly as it was being portrayed. We, we actually don't do eviction notices. I know there's a lot of discussion about that, that the, the marshals do that, the armed sworn law enforcement people actually do those evictions. But it can still be a very dangerous job when you're going on someone's property and telling them they're violating the code. So, we are in the process of reviewing that and, and looking at that, we'll bring back anything. But I know the chairman's brought this up, so this is a really good time to talk about this. Commissioner Galius actually asked about this. If you were so inclined, I'm not suggesting that you do, but if you were so inclined, this committee could actually take action to say that you would like this committee to review those policies, those procedures, the equipment and all those things. And then we would have a meeting with the committee members and the staff and then we would put all that stuff together. And then at the commission meeting, when it gets to request a review by committee, then the committee would present their results of that if we were to do that. So, I know that there was a lot of discussion about that. If you ever wanted to have one, you know.
Five and a half years.
We, we, we could do it now, but I, I don't think that it's necessary. I think that we, staff can do it for you, but if you needed the committee to get involved and if, if Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Galius want an extra meeting on their calendar, we can certainly do that. But that's what that's for, just, just for FYI.
Been holding back all these years.
Yes, sir, but, but, but we're on it. Just so you know, I did want to make that report, it was tragic. I, I think it was, you know, that, that person committed a crime, it could have been a code enforcement officer, it could have been a border utility officer, it could have been.
Yeah.
You know, the, the paper delivery guy. I mean, it was, it just, it was just one of those, one of those random things.
I will, I will repeat this morning, I was telling Kennedy and a couple of folks in the coffee room upstairs. When this incident happened, I did hear a radio report, so I'm not sure exactly who it was. I was, they just announced them as a city leader of Augusta that actually said, and almost a verbatim quote, "It's a dangerous job, they only carry a badge, maybe they should carry a bit more." And I found that a little bit ironic coming from a city who's encouraging a potential defunding of the police that they're willing to consider now arming code. I just, that was, that was just a, a observation I made to a news story from Augusta, not us. I thought that was an interesting observation. Would it make you happy?
I mean, I would like to have one review by committee at least before I'm over, my term's over.
Commissioner Galius may be out for some period of time, but we can get with Commissioner Allen, we can get together and put that together and we will have him present that review by committee.
Much like you, 12 years for me and I've never been part of a review by committee, so what the heck, let's do it.
Okay, we will ask.
On, here we go.
I, I will get on your calendar and we will.
Go out with a bang.
Do that and you can make that presentation.
All right. So be it. Anything else coming before this committee? Any other business before us, any comments from anyone, staff, commissioners, legal, anybody? Nope, nope, public? Nope, all right. All that being said, we are adjourned.